Believe it's being recorded by W A C A Cable TV, but it is being recorded on Zoom by the district. Our order of business this evening is the call to order. Opening procedures, agenda review and adoption. There will be time for a public comment. We will have presentations by the Student Advisory Council. The administrative items tonight include the school improvement plan for Mendez, the school improvement plan for A M S. The superintendent's update Warren approvals consent actions minutes from November twenty one, two thousand and twenty three. Gifts and donations, committee reports of activities, member updates, action items. And then we will adjourn. Yeah, I'll just take the attendance and make sure everyone's okay with the order of business this evening, Tina.
Erin, yes.
Paul.
Erin, yes.
Erin.
Erin, yes.
Mark.
Erin, yes.
Okay. Uh, next I will ask if there's anybody here from the public who wants to offer the school committee some comment this evening. I see some names, but I think those are all our students. Okay, seeing none, and we will move on to the presentations by the Student Advisory Council. Hi, everybody. I think some of you have to unmute yourselves.
Hello.
Hi. Who's going first tonight? I know it's a little different because we're on Zoom and we're out of practice, some of us.
I can go first.
Awesome, thank you.
So, um. We held the Powderpuff uh football game in which the seniors won, so that was pretty successful. It was a, it was a little stucco event. And the Red Cross Club also held a blood drive in which many people chose to donate blood, so that was one positive thing that occurred in the last few weeks as well. And for seniors, college decisions are beginning to come out, so those who applied early action, early decisions are getting their acceptances. And there also happens to be a student-run commits page on Instagram where seniors can uh see their acceptances and also that's something exciting that uh that has occurred within the past few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Uh, I can go next.
Thanks, Emily.
My video is not working today. But so last week, the band concert had their winter concert night, um, and so we got to play a lot of different holiday songs. Um, and two of the band members read the Polar Express story for a lot of the young kids. We did a lot of advertising at the Warren School. Um, and at the Mendez School to try and um get some more community involvement. Um, and then last weekend, there was the illuminate Ashland around downtown where people could listen to um and see different like arts programs perform. And so the new Bel Canto Society is the uh, the high school's new chorus club, so they performed then. And then tomorrow, the chorus and the Bel Canto Society both have their winter performance concert at the high school.
Excellent, thank you. Who's next? Vanessa?
Yeah, I can go next. So just a little sports update. Um, now all of the winter sports are up and running, and both the boys and girls basketball teams, um varsity and the J V teams played Hawkington yesterday, and that was pretty successful. Both teams, all teams showed pretty well. And the boys hockey team have a game tonight, actually, against Norwood that was at three forty-five. And indoor track has been doing pretty well. They've had two meets so far. They've won tonight as well in Boston. And swimming will have their first meet tomorrow at Babson College versus Westwood. And wrestling is doing pretty well as well, and they have, they've, they had their first meet this past Saturday. And another update is also that we have our clocker idol, which is a singing and talent show, uh, which will be on Wednesday, December twentieth at seven P M. At the Ashland High School in the auditorium. And it's our tenth season, so that's pretty exciting. And we have eight contestants, five judges who are teachers, and then it's a five-dollar ticket uh to get in, and you can either use cash or check. And if you're using check, you can make it out to the A H S student activities, and all the proceeds will go to the Ashland Emergency Fund.
Awesome, thank you. Idol is always a fun time. Karina, do you have anything?
Yes, so on Sunday, I'm gonna, uh, we had a very successful student council pancake breakfast, and we raised a little over a thousand dollars, and we had a really good turnout from the whole town. Everyone had a lot of fun, which was good. And then also the Ashland High School Theatrical Society just had their auditions for the upcoming musical Chicago. And we just started rehearsals, and the show is going to be on March first, second and third, so that's really fun.
Awesome. Thank you all. We appreciate it. Lots of good stuff going on. Anything else anybody want to add? And if not, you know, the drill, you don't have to stick around. We know you have a lot of homework.
You're good as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay, next up, Mendez, the school improvement plan presentation. Jenna.
Turn it over to Jenna, and I think you have full access to share your screen, Jenna, okay?
Can everybody see that?
Anything yet, Jenna?
Just the Zoom thing.
You're on the wrong tab there, Jim.
Is it there?
Okay, great. So this is the um, these are the strategic priorities for the district, um, upon which we based our school improvement plan. I have it in a different format here just to share tonight, though I do have it written formally there as well. Um, the first bucket bucket is the equity. And the standard that we looked at was promote appreciation of diverse perspectives to foster mutual respect and cultural understanding. It's really developed. Uh, as we've gone this year, we were able to join Adaptive X, which is a professional development, development company through um the Department of Education, and they're really leading us through a small leadership team. There's six of us on it through um some modules, so that we can then turn, in turn, work with the staff and develop a common understanding of what it means to be a culturally responsive school. Um, it's a pretty big undertaking, and so far, um, I think I've really enjoyed the P D and I'm so glad to help our staff come on board with that. Are there questions about the equity piece? The next bucket is social and emotional learning. Um, we chose to ensure all students have a sense of belonging and are connected to the school community. We spent all of last year as a faculty talking about how we wanted this to work. It was really important to everyone um and to the site council that we continue to have multi-age, multi-grade learning in some way at Mendez, particularly with the new space in the new building. So this was a perfect one for us. Um, so we are doing community learning, which is in that we took the whole school and we shook them up, and we created thirty new classrooms that have third graders, fourth graders and fifth graders in them. And each month we have an activity, um, and the kids are meeting other children and they are meeting other teachers, which also um connects to our, our need to watch and make sure that all children are connected to an adult and have a safe adult that they can go to in the school. I've been interviewing some, some kids about what they think about it, and mostly it's positive. I had one student say he didn't like it. Um, but they're really enthusiastic about the activities. So I, my hope next year is to move some of the activities into some learning kind, I mean, it's learning always because it's social emotional, but maybe some more academic-based activities as well when we're meeting. Any questions on this one? Resource management, this was a great one for us this year because of the new building. So our goal was to provide safe environments for all students and staff. Um, and I have to give a lot of credit to Kate, who really nailed it in the fall in terms of coming up with plans for our arrival and our dismissal and communicating that with everybody um at Mendez, because we were, we were ready on that first day, and the kids came in and they found their classrooms, and that was really exciting. So we have all of our plans in place, all of our routines are working. We've done the practice for some of the drills. And I'll continue to work with the safety committee to make sure that we're up to date and um doing all the right things there. This one will definitely change for the following year. And finally, curriculum and programming, um, we chose to improve student learning curriculum and consistency of instruction aligned to the vision of the graduate across grades. Um, we have started very formal and specific data team meetings this year where teachers are looking at information from Amplify and also from iReady to look at exactly where kids are in their learning and to see where we need to do targeted instruction to improve student growth. Um, that's in the area of E L A is where we're focusing this year. Our hope next year is to expand this to math so that we are able to provide um enrichment and intervention across all areas. Any questions on that?
Jenna, do me a favor, just so the, the committee can see the consistency from when Kelly presented hers, go, go to the, yeah.
This one, yep.
Yeah, just so they can see that this is what's being posted. Jenna just pulled stuff out to make it simpler for folks.
And we did all get that document earlier today, so hopefully everyone had a chance to look at it. And if you have any questions on those details, now would be the time. Everybody good? All right.
I'd like to just also thank my site council and Kate, because it's been a lot of work and it's been going really well.
Well, I hear somebody, but I can't see who's talking.
I was gonna just thank the site council for all the hard work that they did last year, working to develop this plan, and to thank Kate for all she's done since she's come on board. And Paul, who is our liaison, so it's been pretty seamless. So thank you, everyone.
Awesome, thank you. All right, next up.
Sorry, Lori, can I just jump in for a second? I just want to, want to make a comment that the things you see at Mendez, but also at Warren and Pete Presents, that walking into the building and seeing all the data teams and the different data teams, not only academically, but the S C L teams. Uh, it's really quite, you know, the teachers are quite engaged and really walking through all of that data has been pretty impressive to watch. I've walked into both buildings and Mike has as well to see the teachers focusing on looking at the data and how we can improve uh student outcomes. So it's been really, really great.
Thank you, Jim. Last chance for questions for Jenna.
Going once.
Letting you off easy tonight, Jenna.
Lori, just procedurally, we um, we don't vote to approve these, is that right?
No. Unless the law has changed, but I, I know that uh, what, we used to back in the day, and then the law changed to that school committee just uh, like if we had an issue, this would be a chance to give feedback. Um, and then you could go back and, and work on it and come back, but we're not officially approving or rejecting anything. That's the job of the site council.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, Dave. Thank you.
We're all just waiting and saving all our questions for Dave. I'm gonna pound him.
Does that work?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so similar to Jenna, just front page, we based um our school improvement goals on the district strategic priorities and objectives. Most of the goals that um are on the template are new goals for this year. We did have some that have, that do repeat. But a lot of them are goals that we're, and things we're implementing this year, so under the equity priority, um, you know, it's something we have been doing that we want to continue to create individualized student success plans for all students who do not meet expectations on M C A S tests. We are expanding those this year. Um, after the new year, just gonna be meeting in our teacher teams, talking about what those plans or how would adjust plans to create them for um, for all students. So that's something that we're going to be discussing. We have been creating I S S Ps now, I want to say. I want to say this is year four, maybe year five that we've been doing them, so we feel they've been successful. Those get mailed out after Thanksgiving for those families, and we'll be working on that this half of the year for the template for all students.
Can I just ask you generally, I don't want to take us on a sidetrack, but it's just how, how that's going, how families are responding to that process and um, you know, I'm curious any feedback you have on how the I S P, I S S Ps are going.
Uh, yeah, so it's, it's going well. I mean, they were mailed to families around Thanksgiving. Um, I don't know how many families reach out, so the letters say to those families, you know, here's, here's M C A S scores, here are some of the interventions that the team has talked about that they'll be implementing, and of course, we want to reach out to families to see if there is something that they feel would be helpful, something that should be part of the plan, um, knowing their child the best. So uh, I know that there are some parents who have reached out to, to teachers and had questions around exactly some of those interventions or um, you know, what that process looks like. Some of the questions were more, um, we created them for anyone not meeting expectations, and some reached out where their child was one question away from meeting expectations, but um, on a process, we did those for all students, so we didn't, it was difficult to draw a line, but I think just feel it's going well, you know, those interventions, they're working with those students. We'll review them in January, February, when we're sort of halfway through the year to see how the interventions are going, and you know, we find out how the students do as, as we progress through the year. Um, ultimately, looking at M C A S tests in the summer, right, when we get those results, but now with us using iReady and I X L and some of those programs that we're getting more immediate feedback, and teachers are looking at data as the school year goes along, so I think that's a huge help as well. So, so far, so good, but you know, as I said earlier, we, we have a little more work to do in the spring.
And if I, I can just interject for a second, I think one of the things that's been really helpful is our partnership with Open Architects. Um, and that's going to even allow us to take this to the next level. I think we, we discussed the fact that right now we're only utilizing the, the free version, which gives us M C A S and access. But we have um, developed the contract with them and are on board now, and they are currently developing our full-scale uh portal that's going to include all of our data. Um, I'm expecting that to be done by February, uh, maybe even sooner. And Dave will be able, as, as everybody will be able to now have easy access to personalized um, data portals for every single student that's really going to allow the staff to, to even implement, you know, more detailed I S S Ps for all of our kids. It's exciting stuff.
Dave, can I ask a quick question? Um, since you've been doing these for a couple of years, a handful of years for the students who haven't met expectations on M C A S, do you have any kind of anecdotal data of how they've helped those kids? Either be able to meet expectations or, you know, kind of make progress in whatever areas they need to make progress?
I mean, I think most of the students have, you know, were, have made progress. I mean, uh, where, when you look at our overall performance numbers and growth, we're very happy with it. I think some students, we look at it, right? Some students have done very well, uh, others didn't make the progress we would have liked and didn't have the growth we would have liked, and teachers, you know, talk about why that might be and what we can do to help support those students. Um, so it's, I, I think overall, we, we feel there, we feel there an important part and an important part of what we do, and, and uh, again, I really do believe that now that we're using um the systems, like iReady and math and E L A or I X L or Amplify in, in science as well, that I think this is only going to give teachers more immediate feedback and to be able to make those I S Ps even more specific or to be able to adjust them really in terms of what interventions are, aren't working. So I, I, I think we feel it's, um, it's extremely helpful and, and uh in terms of what we do.
Sounds like that data comparison that Mike was talking about will be really interesting to see and be able to kind of track um, you know, kind of the progress of different, different populations, including students who have been on I S Ps.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think to have them all in one one spot, one um program is going to be huge, um, to be able to have that easy access and also to have it in one spot where you can easily get that data from all those different programs is, is going to be that much easier for, for teachers and that much easier to, to look at data and be able to use that to target instruction. So I think it's, I'm really excited about the Open Architects too.
Is, so Dave, just a quick question, kind of something you said relative to your answer to Mark and uh have you noticed that at least cer- certain parents, it sounded like you, you were saying that their perception uh and feeling towards these I S S Ps might be negative and, and, and they wanted to be on the other side uh of, you know, if there were one question in, in, uh, on the, on the uh, needs improvement or not meeting expectations, right? Uh, that they felt that the I S S Ps were negative in some way, because if, if it were me and my kid were either on one, one side or the other, one question, one question on either side, I'd, I'd be really thrilled to have a individualized success plan, right, for my student. Uh, so are they, are they thinking that it's a negative thing to have an I S S P or?
Uh, I didn't get that. I, I got it that it was more of, you know, uh, yeah, I thought they were, you know, I thought they were doing, let's say, so far, they were doing well this year in class and you know, then we, we get the news that they didn't meet expectations. Are, are they doing, are they doing okay? It was, it was really more about their performance now as related to the I S S P, makes sense. I don't know that I got sort of negative in as much as, do I need to be worried about what they're doing right now?
Okay, so it, it was, it was more of an alert, like, hey, whoa, what's up? Something might be, might be wrong that I didn't think was wrong.
Right. Exactly, that's why we, we have the teacher information and all their emails and contacts, so they can just reach out if they, it's because some of those questions do come up. Um, and they'll reach out. Uh, it's, it's not a huge number. Like I said to you, um, it might be a couple of parents who have those questions, but I don't know if it was sort, I wouldn't view it as negative in as much as I think they're doing okay. Yeah, is that the case? And so sometimes it's teachers talking through, hey, they're doing great, they're right on track, working hard this year. You know, so I know there were some of those exchanges with teachers.
Okay, yeah, it was more just wanting to make sure that, you know, if we can, you know, somehow help them see uh, an I S S P as a positive thing regardless of where, where they are, right?
And, and I think, well, that's why moving to try to have uh, or having all students receive those, right? So it would be everybody receives those. It's just a question of what was their performance last year and what are some of the things that we are looking at regardless of of that performance. So I think that may take that you know, that misunderstanding away, but I think a lot of what we got was more about uh, they wanted to make sure that students were performing well this year to date and um, from when those parents who reached out, they were. So I think it was just having those questions.
Yeah.
Yeah. Dave, can I ask you one more question? Um, so what does it look like for a student who may be on an I E P? If they would be someone who would be flagged as a student that you might develop an I S S P for, do they get that as well too? Or is it a conversation that happens with the I E P team?
Yeah, so a lot of the, the accommodations on an I S S P would be the accommodations that are on their I E P, right? So that's, the I S S P wouldn't change. Right? So whatever they should be getting for their I E P, that those would just be put into their I S S Ps, right? Because those are some of the things that they need to access the curriculum or to be successful, so um, they, they really, they carry over, if you will, right? So it's just
So they would get both documents? Would it be, um, I'm just trying to think of how that might work within the special ed process. Because I can see how it will be confusing for parents whose kids might be on an I E P, and then they get another document and wondering what does this mean? How does, what's the interplay with the I E P? I just didn't know if there was a different process or different notice or uh, whether or not maybe they didn't get one, and it was just something that was flagged for a discussion for the I E P team.
Yeah, no, they, they get the same, they get the same letter, you know, that the other parents get, so in that top letter just explains what an I S S P is and why it was created and you know, for a lot of them, it's just that a lot of the accommodations are the same as what they would have in an I E P, so it doesn't it doesn't change anything for the I E P, so.
No, no, and I wouldn't anticipate it. I'm just seeing, I could just envision where there may be some confusion on behalf of parents, so just something to uh, and I, if it hasn't come up, I'm sure kids on I E Ps have gotten them, so if it hasn't come up, I'm, or if it has, I'm sure you, you've been able to deal with it, but.
Yeah, no, it hasn't, um, but you know, I think if we did have those questions, those are things that we could put in a letter just to clarify, but to, to date, I haven't had that question. So. Are we good with I S S Ps? Actually, Dave, I think, I want to go back to one of Tina's points at the beginning. Um, so if we had, let's assume twenty students who started out on I S S Ps at the beginning of the year that we identified is we're tracking the students, their assessment, what percentage of those students at the end of the year would we have identified to still be on an I S S P? Right? So I guess, in other words, if we've got twenty, by the end of the year, do we have fifty percent of the students are making significant progress to take them off I S S Ps? Yeah, so um, I could, I'd have to go in and get those numbers. I, I can tell you that um, our sixth grade had, you know, has uh, most of them, as you've moved to seventh grade and the eighth grade, the, the numbers of I S Ps decrease in terms of what the percentages, I, uh, yeah, I'd have to look, but the, the sixth grade students have, or sixth grade teams have um, a larger share and do more I S S Ps. Uh, so seventh grade, those numbers go down absolutely, and then in eighth grade is each year, that has been the smallest number that's created. I would just have to look in terms of what those percentages are, but it is positive. So the, the eighth grade teachers are doing less of those I S S Ps because students are growing and reaching those goals than sixth grade, and that's been consistent since we've done them. Okay. That's the point, yeah, thanks. Okay, so for um, the, the next one was just around math placement. And uh, just as part of um, the math vertical team, we're having conversations around the math placement process. We've in really targeting and looking at math placement um, from grade five to grade six. So the ma, the vertical math committee is meeting to review um, math data student performer, performance, so that placement and programming, you know, we want to make sure that those are equitable um, for all students, so um, we're, we've started those meetings, we're looking at um, our process and looking at student performance, so that's something that we're going to be looking at throughout the year to make sure that we make any adjustments, or we, you want to make sure that our process is equitable and that all students have access to to the advanced um, math courses, especially focusing on grades five to six, so. Um, that's taking place this year, and that's under our equity, under the equity objective. And then the equity team, you know, one of the things we're doing, um, we've done some activities and worked with staff last year around race and equity and D E I, and we wanted to bring it to, to students and have an impact there, so last year, we piloted the Playbook three fifty-one program, and that's training students um, who are interested in the program, providing the opportunity for a training around, it's really an anti-bias, anti-discrimination program. So it entails um, students being trained, um, they do some teamwork activities and some scenarios. Um, and largely, it's driven by students, so really the goal is to have those conversations or those activities run by our Playbook three fifty-one ambassadors or former ambassadors, so um uh, I had a meeting actually this week with um, with Sam Levinson, who was a former Play, uh, three fifty-one ambassador when he was at the middle school. And he's working with um, myself, Ms. McCucci, who piloted the program last year, our equity team, to um create a training for both seventh and eighth grade students. So we're excited about that to bring students into the fold. Um, we'll be training eighth grade students first, which is next week, and seventh grade at the end of January, so we're just trying to as much student interest as we can, start training students and As much student interest as we can, start training students and. I think it's it's a way that we can have um. Have a direct impact and have students involved. I think that's what was kind of missing in that first year, so. Well, the playbook. Um. Fits perfectly within what we want to do, so we're excited about. There are questions on. Math, the math um placement or our playbook trainings for students? The second strategic priority is um with it being SEL. Something that has been happening, um and we're excited that our guidance counselors monthly. Deliver lessons to students in all three grades. They've started sending home a. SEL newsletter where families can get a background on what they've been doing in terms of the lessons. They're including. Parent tips or strategies that relate to. Those presentations, so um. Just listening to the counselors after the first two months, they said students are doing. They're excited. Students are doing an amazing job with it. They're participating and. Um it seems like they really feel like they're getting something out of those conversations. Um the last lesson was around. Uh digital citizenship. Um it's certainly always timely. Um so those are going really well and we'll continue to send those updates out to families. I think that's an important part to it. Um this year. Programs were still running for for this year, the um signs of suicide program to be delivered in eighth grade. Um that will be happening af- happening after the break. I did connect with decisions at every turn. We'll also be providing the minding your mind program. To seventh and eighth grade students. Um we did that last year as well.
So.
Say that again?
What what is the mind in your mind program?
It it's it's a program where. Young people, so they had the the presenters that they have are uh people who are. Uh like in their early twenties, you know, so really. Um I think the kids look at them and they they come up and this program has them talking about. Mental health challenges that they've been through and their experiences. And at the middle school level, they they do also focus a lot on. Um the strategies and the things that help them um on their path to. To success around mental health. So it's really just young people talking to our kids around mental health. Um. So um it's last year is very well received, eighth grade and and in seventh and eighth grade last year, so. Certainly gives them great information and talks about strategies and. Um ultimately, we want to destigmatize that. Uh mental health and in talking about mental health. So that's the underlying importance of the program in and of itself, so. Um the presenters who. Spoke to us last year are coming back. Um the year before that, they were different presenters, but. They did a great job in the first year, but it just so happens that the same two presenters will be. Um coming back to speak with us in another couple of months, so. But it's a great program, I think. Very happy with the way. Um it's been received, so. And and then I just noted the Metro West Health Survey that we gave this year. It's given biannually, so. That data typically comes, we might get a summary. In the spring, but we have pretty much the full data and at the end of the school year and we'll review that data. Insight Council, uh certainly with staff and talk about goals that we can set for following year. So I think that's something that we've been, that data we've looked at every year and. Um I want to say each time the data does come out, there's always goals that we set based on. Um we feel the data, the feedback and some of the needs that come from the survey, so. So that's an important part of what we do around the CEO as well. Questions on those? So we had the SEL lessons, SOS, minding your mind and just. We just did the survey last month. And again, we'll get data in three or four months. So under resource management, the two of those pieces were. We implemented or piloted, I should say, we piloted Go Guardian last year with about a dozen teachers, just to 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 take it on a trial run. It went very well. All the teachers, a lot of positive feedback and we're using that. Our teachers are all using that this year and that program is really. Uh about monitoring online use when students are using Chromebooks and working in the classroom. So we provided a training at the beginning of the year. Truth be told, it was a brief training. It's pretty intuitive and um. The teachers who do piloted agree with that. It's really easy to use and um. I I think people within a few weeks felt like they had a grasp of it and were using it and um. I know we're really comfortable with it. So there's a lot of positive feedback from teachers on Go Guardian.
It it Dave, have we have we gotten any feedback from students on Go Guardian?
They don't like it.
There there's a reason why I asked.
Yeah, I I mean.
I've I've heard, I've heard many, many stories. How many, you know, how many are uh? A tall tales and how many are uh are actual, but uh. But just.
Yeah, yeah, you know.
I know I know what you're hearing is you're hearing probably a broader uh. Section than than I am, but.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I think, you know, ultimately, when it's, I think the teachers like it, you know, just. It's it's good that the students know we have it too, so that teachers, you know, if they're you doing those activities, that it's something that they. They can use in in that they. They can, we can use it to monitor students. So I think. Um I think for the most part, students have kind of gotten used to it. Um by now, I I didn't think that they liked it when, like the teachers piloted, they're just kind of figuring it out, but. Um ha- haven't heard a a whole lot of. Of feedback off of it, other than, you know, for some students that. Might not be thrilled with the idea that teachers are doing that. So it's a challenge, right, in classes where. Um teachers are kind of run those activities and. Uh especially in middle school, too, students so tempted to open up so many tabs and try, you know, we want them on task, so I I think it's certainly a. Uh a great step in that direction.
Yeah, I mean, so uh i- is there? Cause some of the feedback I've heard and I I don't know anything about it, so take it for what it's worth. Um. There were. I've I've gotten some feedback from kids that there. There were some privacy concerns, right? Uh that. Uh that teachers were able to see or do what what they were doing when they weren't in their class and and things like that. So I don't know. Um if there's anything that that we need to do to look at and ensure that we have best practices around. Um just implementing it and 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 effectively using it, you know, in in the best way to to balance the. The privacy and the control and safety of it, right?
Yeah, I mean. In talking to teachers, they're 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 using it when they're in their classes. So, you know, in terms of it being turned off or if students are. Taking their Chromebooks home after school, I I can't speak to that, but I. I know that teachers are using it. They're actively using it when students are. Are in their classroom. Um so. Uh I haven't heard. Teachers are, you know. I don't know that they would be going and and looking what students are doing in the next class because they have another class in front of them, right? So. Uh that might be a student perception, so I I again, I can't speak. Can't speak that. They might feel that way and worry about privacy, but ultimately, it's. It's just teachers monitoring what students are. Are doing while they're in, while they're in their class, so. I I haven't heard students. Share any privacy concerns with me or anything along those lines. It's just mostly. Not liking if they're off task and the teacher can see that they're opening a a tab and doing something that they shouldn't be doing. That's mostly what I hear from students.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um and then the the second one was, you know, we be we did begin to install cameras. Um. In hallways at the middle school, so. Um we started with two really kind of our two main hallways. Last year and, you know, each year we're going to be looking to add more of those interior cameras. They're in the hallways. Um for us, it's really helpful. Um where students, especially at intersections where students are. Are are constantly passing or in front of bathrooms, that type of thing. So it's just kind of monitoring hallway use and we have used them. And I think it's really helpful at our level. So if there is a. An issue, something happens um. That either isn't seen or there's. Kind of. Multiple stories, it's it's great to be able to look at cameras and kind of see what happened. So we'll be looking to add. Cameras as we continue to move forward, you know, there's a lot of hallways. So we're starting with the main hallways and we'll go from there, but. I I think it's it is really helpful to have those cameras up and. Maintain safety and everybody knows those are there, which I think it's a good thing, so. Um we're going to continue moving forward with that, but this is really the first year that. We've had those. We've had exterior cameras, but. Um we have not had hallway cameras until this year. So.
And I just like get back to Paul's question about the the privacy. I I I'm assuming these are all school issued Chromebooks, right? Just for the purposes of. Their education and their schoolwork, so I mean, it should. I'm not sure that there should be any expectation of privacy or how is it communicated to the kids that they're only to use the Chromebooks for their schoolwork? And it's not for games or whatever else they're trying to do.
Yeah, that's by teachers. It's being.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, that's uh the acceptable use policy as well. They should be using it for school purposes and. The teachers are constantly constantly reminding them that that's the purpose of it, so.
Yeah, as I'm just thinking, I mean, if it's a tool um for education provided by the district, then there really. Shouldn't be any expectation of privacy.
Well, so I I don't think this is the appropriate time, but I don't agree with that at all, because. Just because it's a district. Tool does not mean that teacher A should be able to track what I'm doing whenever I she wants, right? So. It's the same way that teacher A shouldn't have access to the students' emails. That's a district thing and the district as a whole has access. So through Paul Carpenter's group and stuff like that, for the right reasons, we can get access to it. Um it doesn't mean that teacher A should have access to. Everything that the students are doing whenever they're doing it. So there there there's, it just because it's a a district resource doesn't mean that. Every district employee should have. Access to look at what they're doing when they're not doing something contextual to that that class, so.
So that's not my understanding of like the implementation. Um I thought it was when when students are being asked to do a specific. Task on their Chromebook. Hmm. That then and only then, pretty much the teacher would bring it up and just make sure the kids aren't on YouTube.
Yep, YouTube and. Whatever else that they could could try to figure out what tabs they can try to open. But yeah, that's the purpose. That's what they're doing. Yeah, the teacher, if they go into another tab, the teacher can actually go in and close the tab. Like, so if I. Went on YouTube and was watching a video. Um they can go in and close the tab and then say to the student. Focus on your work. So um it I I think the teachers, the teachers do. Teachers do find it. They do find it helpful and the students knowing that it is helpful to try to. Um bring them in because it's difficult. A lot of times the seats are in groups, they're all facing in different directions. It's challenging for teachers when they're using their devices to keep them on.
Yeah, we need with the shift in education and the leveraging of technology, there will also be. A shift in the tools that help us manage it and, you know. We first had iPhones, there were no controls on them. Now we have parental controls. I don't see this as any different and.
Uh like I said, I I don't think this is a time for it, but. The the intent isn't what I'm complaining about or even bringing it up as an issue. That there's no controls saying that if teach that teacher A. Can only use it for that reason and only use it at that time. Right? So uh but again, that's a that's a top topic for a different time.
Okay. Well, questions on cameras too, just. Again, for us, it's new. We just started it this year and we're going to continue to work to.
Just you, Dave, on the cameras.
Mm-hmm.
When you think about years past where you haven't had them and you have it and you've had incidents and. Are you feeling more supported as a administrator and able to deal with things better now having them?
Yes. Yes, I think, uh especially at our level too, where you can. You try and you even just try to. Figure out an issue. Let's say something happened and maybe a student, it was an issue, a student was hurt or something happened. And you talk to four students and you get four stories, that's challenging. And you want to ultimately make sure you're having the conversations you need to have and. Um if there was a safety issue or something happening, we want to make sure it's addressed and. It's hard to do that sometimes if you don't exactly know. Um what happened and it certainly helps out with other. With other pieces as well, whether it be, you know, if you're worried about vandalism, you're worried about uh people being in. Uh areas of the building, they shouldn't be, things of that nature, so um. I I think it is. I think it is really helpful. I know that. Uh Mike Morrow, my assistant principal, I know. He he likes it sometimes where it's helpful to not have to talk to ten students if it's in an area where there's. A camera and he can just kind of, okay, that's what happened and move forward from there, so it can. It's great for safety and I think it's great for us making sure we address the situation properly and I. I think it's also a huge time saver too, where. You you know, it can, it can take a long time if you have to talk to seven, eight or ten students. Um in one of those areas, so I think it's been. I like it. I know, I know if he was here, he would tell you he likes it. Um so. Um.
Jenny Jenny and Kate and Kate can tell you how much they. They appreciate the cameras.
Yes, they do.
Yeah.
Just anecdotally, I mean, I know at this time, well, not December of last year, but last fall, there were TikTok challenges that might have. Exacerbated things, but do you feel like you've seen a reduction in vandalism as well because of them?
I would s- I would say yes, we we didn't have a. There wasn't a significant problem with vandalism until that TikTok challenge. That's um really what. Where we saw a lot of our issues around that time. Um but I I think it's, it certainly is definitely helpful because if something does happen, we can. Narrow down a time as to when it happened and that that helps us out a lot, so. Um I I I would say yes, if I think about. Even this year, we we have not had many of those types of issues. Um so. You know, whether it's the students know that the camera's there now, I I don't know, but I I know that. We we haven't had um those issues this year to date, which has been, just been a positive. Because the students notice they're there. Students know they're there. Um but uh which I don't think is a bad thing.
Thanks.
In the last priority, just under curriculum programming. We are using. New software. Um this year, so. For our science department, that is Amplify. So this is the first year where all, really all three grades are using the same software, so. Teachers were trained. Um to use the Amplify Science Program and those are being implemented in all grades, so. Um yeah, and I think the great thing about that is in terms of. Being able to assess students along the way. Have have them use that as benchmarks and and be able to. To see and apply that data and how students are doing um is a huge positive, so. I I think it's a lot. It's a it's a new software program. I think um I think the science teachers like it and it's adjusting that and figuring out. Um what they want to use more of, what they want to use less of, but I I know in using a program, they they see it as a positive. And I see it as a huge positive that all students in all grades are using the same. The same program, so. Um that's one of the programs as well as, I think I put it that. Uh down here as well and that uh that's iReady. Both math and ELA teachers are uh implementing uh iReady diagnostic testing. And one of the other new programs, I didn't put it in here. The other new programs piloting is also IXL. So there are some, probably about a dozen teachers who are. Using IXL and that software. Um. So. I I think, I know, Mike, we talked about open architects earlier. Note, if assuming that we're moving forward these things, it'll be hugely helpful when we're talking about, you know, Amplify. Um iReady, potentially IXL. To be able to house that data and be able to access individual students and performance in those in one spot will be. Um will be significant. Um and the last piece on there really is, I know we've had conversations just about um. Scheduling and and looking at scheduling and we've had a sk- you know, scheduling committee just to look at things like. Um class sizes and. Um numbers in our. Um, class sizes and um numbers in our school and, you know, making sure that. Whatever we're doing schedule wise or programming wise uh maximizes. Performance and maximizes opportunities for students, so that's something that we're. We're looking at, I think we're continuing to look at sort of where numbers are falling in our school and enrollment, but that's something that. We're continuing to analyze for this year as well, so.
Dave, can I ask a quick question about the scheduling piece? Um, because my understanding was with the the half team that was brought on to the middle school. Uh, with the funding that we'll have to absorb for those new teachers, one of the things we were looking at in terms of class sizing. Has been the the change in schedule and how that may be able to help um in terms of class sizing, so I had in my mind. That kind of the a new uh class schedule or kind of this analysis would be done. For if there was gonna be any change, it would be implemented next fall. Um, so what is your thoughts on a timeline in terms of implementation of any schedule changes and and kind of how that may. Impact the the staffing issue for next year?
Yeah, I I in terms of timing, I'm not not sure. How long it would take, I mean, I've had conversations with Superintendent Adams too, just about sort of um. Enrollment numbers and I think last year we had those conversations in in scheduling committee and. Um, our our the number shifted a a bit, so it's something that we we started looking at it. You you're right, I think if we were to make any changes for next year, that's something we would have to identify by the spring for sure, we start our. Process. Really in in around April or May is is if we were gonna make any significant changes, we would have to make the changes certainly. Certainly by the spring, right? If if any changes were gonna be made for the fall for the coming year, so if there were any major changes. Um, that we're gonna be making to the schedule, that's something that would have to. Timeline um for the twenty-four would have to be, you know, would have to happen or we'd have to make those decisions by. Um, we'd wanna make them by March or April of this year at the at the very latest.
And do you feel like the scheduling committee is prepared to do that or like we're we're, I guess I'm curious where you are in the process?
Yep, so we. Yep, sure, Jim.
So Tina, um, couple of things with this, I think as we're looking at our enrollment numbers. Uh, we sort of put put it on pause a little bit with regard to. Uh, the scheduling committee at the end of last year, because we we couldn't really come to. A consensus at that point with the faculty and staff. That really met the needs of all of our students, the special education students, our pull-ins, our pull-outs. Uh, you know, the push-ins, uh, the the additional services that that students needed. The current schedule is meeting that need and we weren't able to figure out a way to actually. Design a schedule that actually reduced staff or not necessarily reduced that, but took away that half team. If you will, uh, and able to to then offer the same services that we were um. Required to offer our students on on IEPs, five oh fours, um, et cetera, so. As we were looking at it, even going into the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Those half teams, we envisioned to exist at least one more year. Um, until we can really figure out a schedule that is appropriate, that meets the needs of of our. All of the populations, there's no perfect schedule, that's what we all figured out. Um, but counseling staff, special education staff. Uh voiced a lot of concerns about moving away from the current schedule and how we were gonna provide services. So it's a much deeper, longer conversation, um. But if if there's going to be a change, my guess is it would be the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
That's helpful to me, I like I said, I just had a different timeline in my head, so it's helpful to understand that, thank you.
Yeah, yep. And that being said, I also wanna state that we did start absorbing. Um, into the operating budget this year in anticipation of the S R money being um taken away, so.
And that was the last piece of curriculum and programming.
Any other questions for Dave? I don't see any, I don't hear any. Thank you, Dave, thank you to the middle school site council and the Mendez Site Council. And to all of you for, it's great to see like the consistency in the reports and everything trailing back to the. District goals that we had set, so great work, everybody, thank you. So, last chance for another question and I'm gonna move on to Jim for his superintendent's report. Okay, Jim.
Dave, can you stop sharing?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, just a couple of things, one, um, now, I've done this in the past and it's nothing I. Ever wanna do again in the future, but um, I a- as a as a community and a. Um administrative team and the school committee and uh the entire faculty, staff and the community of Ashland, just our our. Thoughts, prayers and hearts go out to the Noel family and um loss of one of our former students unexpectedly. Uh, right before Thanksgiving, so um, and I just want, you know, to state that upfront, that um. You know, the support that the the district and the community has given. Um, to the family has been outstanding and and continues to be so, so. Um, you know, Pete was on here, uh, I would just tell you how impressed and. Grateful and thankful that I, we have someone like Pete um leaving that building and. Uh, and how he has approached this entire um tragic. So. So that's, you know, I I I just wanna start with that, um, secondly, um. There will be a calendar survey coming out uh by the end of the week, uh as we continue, I I've had a few. Uh, community questions, but also teachers have asked about, usually we have the school calendar um already. Approved, sometimes I have two years worth approved uh by now, um typically in November. Um, but I I felt like we needed to to ask some questions uh with regard to. Uh, next year's calendar and calendar moving forward, um, so a survey will be coming out. Um, if I was to present a schedule to you right now, um, of of the timeline for our calendar itself, we would be ending the school year. In twenty-four, twenty-five, right around June twenty-eighth. Um, uh, if we had five snow days, so um, just something that we need to be thoughtful of uh in the future. Um. The strategic plan, um, I know we've been waiting and finalizing that, Mike and I are actually, hopefully we'll be finalizing it with Prem on Thursday of next week. Uh, finalizing meaning ready to come to you as a board for your final input, um, so that's our goal, um. And then we are also in the process of developing a a a team to review our student management software system. Uh, currently we have iPass, uh, we have two more years left on the contract, but uh it's not really the most efficient and effective. Um, student management system, uh, and there's probably only about six more, six districts in the state that are actually using this. System now, when it used to be actually um pretty high. And so we're gonna take the, you know, a thoughtful approach and we have teams from each building uh and looking at. Three other um, three other systems um that will hopefully provide us. Again, when we talk about the data and the open architects and uh the data that we're trying to pull from iPass, um. It it's really a challenge at times, um, and even parents and teachers and user friendly, uh, we we wanna open it up. More for for families to use, so um. I think that is all I have for an update, uh, next Friday is an early release day uh for the winter break. December break. That's it.
Thanks, Jim. Paul, do you have warrant approvals?
I do. Uh, between November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three and December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three. I, Paul Kendall, authorized by my signatures, signature payables in the amount of. Eight hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and seven cents. This includes general fund expenses of five hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. Revolving expenses of two hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and eighty-three cents. And grant expenses of two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and meals tax expenses of eighty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Thank you. Uh, minutes from November twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three, does anybody have any recommended changes? Seeing none, hearing none, who has a motion?
I moved to accept the minutes as presented. Second.
All in favor, Mark?
Yeah, I gotta do this with my roll call, um, but yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Okay. And then gifts and donations, Jim?
Yes, for you.
Oh, did I not say Paul?
No, and yes, you. You just kinda raised your hand like you're.
Yes. Gifts and donations.
Uh, yes, we have a few, I I'm gonna lump up, we've got like fifteen um that donated to helping our own fund. Uh, so I'm just gonna lump those all together, um, six hundred and sixty dollars. We have a three thousand dollar donation to the student travel expense from Kristen and Michael Worster. We have Plan AID, two hundred and ten dollars and thirty-five cents for miscellaneous gifts and donations. And uh Masters Institute of Technology, twenty-two hundred for uh miscellaneous high school gifts and donations. Uh, for a total of six thousand, eight hundred seventy dollars and thirty-five cents.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve those?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Mark?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Aye. And member updates, we're at the end. Who's first?
I'll have a. For, I don't know who's first, Lori, but can I go last?
Absolutely, thanks.
I'm happy to go first. Or you can, Mark, we'll fight over.
My update was gonna add no update, so there, it's not gonna.
Um, I just wanted to update, there was an Ashpac meeting last week um that I was able to go to and um. Christie, they had invited Christie Arnold to attend the meeting as well too, to talk about collaboration between. Um, Ashpac and the um EL Parent Advisory Council that uh Christie is trying to get off the ground and so. Um, you know, they kind of shared some ideas in terms of collaboration, Christie did a great job, of course, as always of explaining. Um, you know, kind of her role and her staff's role and kind of the the overlap. Uh, for certain students that receive both EL services and special ed services, and so there was. Um, you know, a a nice conversation about uh parent outreach and collaboration, so I think that'll that'll be nice. Uh, moving forward, um, and it was a a nice group, there were a number of new faces at at Ashpac as well too, so it was nice to see that group growing.
Thanks, Tina. Um, I'll share next, I I've only uh gone to the Warren Site Council since we last met. Uh, but we had really great communication there about communication, uh, there's a parent on the site council who has. Dual citizenship and her husband has dual citizenship and she had put together an excellent PowerPoint about. Um, communication from that point of view, reaching out to our immigrant communities or, you know, the the groups that we've. Talked about for all these years uh about trying to reach and I I thought that her presentation was really well done. And um, it's uh. Brought up a lot of, you know, points from uh, if we just had a lot of empathy, it was a very empathetic conversation and I thought that it would be. Helpful if she brought her PowerPoint to the school committee at some point. So if you guys also would think that would be useful, it was just, it's a really great parent perspective and it opened up some really great conversation. Um, so I'd like to add that to an agenda in January, if that sounds good to all of you.
That sounds great.
Yeah. Okay, Paul?
Uh, I know there's several things I'll probably forget, the, I think the big one is. Uh, I think I mentioned to the group before. Uh, that the legislature had approved a hundred million dollars uh to uh funding to the MSBA. To us uh provide some additional funding to projects that were adversely impacted. By the pandemic and so we had some estimates, I think I threw out there that we expected it would be around. A three point four to three point eight million dollars or something like that. Uh, happy to report, we we just received the updated convoluted spreadsheet that they used, but. Uh, the end result of it is that uh. It uh, we're we're gonna receive uh five point five seven million dollars more from the MSBA. Uh, so that's, that's some good news, um, good news on that front, now. Just so you understand what that means, that just means that the proportion of the pie that they're paying is more, it doesn't increase the the project budget or anything like that, so it's. Instead of them paying a little over uh twenty-six uh, well, and this, the the final number won't be. Done until we know what our final budget is and what we expend, but uh the maximum grant was just over twenty-six million and now it's. Uh, just under thirty-two million dollars, so um. So that's some some positive, positive news that's hot off the presses from, when did that come, Jim, yesterday, day before?
Yeah, yesterday, yeah.
So, that that's all I have, I'm sure I'm forgetting some some things, but.
Well, that's excellent news, it's always good to hear about money coming in rather than money going out. So, good news. Aaron?
Okay, um, well, my first update is I attended my first ever Ashland High School Wrestling Tournament. And um, she's not on tonight because she's at a meet right now, but I wanted to call out Nora. Um, because watching Nora wrestle was one of the most inspiring things I think I've ever seen an Ashland athlete do. Um, and then not only to have like wrestled and just lost a really intense match. And she was in the stands and then immediately saw one of her teammates was wrestling. And as somebody she's very close with, she ran right back down to the mat and got on the floor and was cheering for them and it was. An incredibly special moment uh last Saturday, both Mark and I were there, um. But being able to see not only the whole team, um, but specifically Nora and the fact that she is our student liaison, I was just. Incredibly impressed by her and wanted to say that before I go on, um. So as most of the committee and uh admin team knows, and for anybody that knows me on LinkedIn, um. My entire group um at work. Uh, was divested from GE to Ernst &amp; Young a month ago. And it's taken a month for me to kind of understand um. What our future is and what will be expected of me in light of the changes, we have an extremely bright future despite the fact that there were. Quite a few layoffs at EY yesterday uh that are in the Wall Street Journal, but. My group specifically, we have a big ask in front of us and being on the leadership team, I will be tasked with a lot. Um, I've served on this committee for eight and a half years and I have. Loved the relationships that it has brought, I have so much respect and admiration for the. Intellect, the empathy, the capability of everybody here. But I also know in times past when I have tried to balance too much or pull myself too thin, you know. Lots of different things have happened while I've served, that it's been. Not only a disservice to my family or to my work, but it's not been the best, I just, I know I'm gonna be in the office a lot and I'm gonna be traveling a lot. And I won't be able to to give this what it deserves anymore, um. And so with that, tonight is my last meeting and I'll be tendering my resignation um effective. Immediately, um, the few people that knew about this have already said, oh, well, hey, now you can run AEFI and I was like, no. Absolutely not, um, the only thing I will be doing from a volunteer perspective for like a while is being the. Kids Night Out Face Paint Lady for two more times and then my career with that is also over, um. But it has been. Sorry, I'm still sitting off camera holding my hand. It has been an honor serving with you all.
Aaron, I'll jump in if you need a minute just to catch your breath, um. Thank you for, I mean, eight years volunteering on this board, we all, everyone here knows what's involved in that. Um, I know sometimes it's hard, you know, the community might only see us in one or two meetings a month and. Um, isn't quite sure what we do, but but I know that you have uh put your whole heart into wanting to make. This community better and thank you for your service and thank you for um. You know, it sounds like you're gonna be. you know, it sounds like you're gonna be having an exciting new job and you'll have the ability to give that the attention and your, your family. And I just wanted to thank you for your contributions. And wish you the best. I'm I'm not gonna say goodbye. I'm pretty sure we'll see you again and we'll figure something out in that regard. Um, but thank you.
Yeah, I'm I'm not gonna say it any better than 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 what she just said. So uh, so I'll just say thank you as well and 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 ditto what she, what she said.
Yeah, and 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 I wanna join in that too, Aaron. It's been, you know, I didn't know each other really before. Um, before we started serving together, which was very close in time, we both joined the committee, it's about the same time and um, it's been a pleasure. We've become good friends and and thank you for everything you've contributed to, you know, to our group as a committee, as a team, broader than just the committee, but to our community more generally. Thank you.
And I've served with you the shortest amount of time, but um, thank you, Aaron, for all that you've given. Um, you know, your time and effort to the, to the school committee. Uh, no doubt that you're gonna continue to find other ways to be involved. Uh, but it's you you when you need to to take the time to make sure that you have time for your family, we all understand that. Um, and so, you know, I wish you a ton of luck in your new position. I'm sure you're gonna knock it out of the park and um, like Lori said, this isn't goodbye. Um, but thank you for all that you've done.
And I'll jump in just from the administrative side, Aaron. Uh, you know, it's always a balance, right? When you have someone come aboard and and you've been with me uh, ten years, my my entire, you know, just about my entire tenure as superintendent, but when, when folks come on to a board such as this with children within the system, it's that balance of trying to figure out, okay, how do I be um, an advocate for my child? How do I be the the leader I need to be from a school committee member? And you always kept that in balance. I don't think any one of our our administrators felt as though you crossed the line with us or with them uh, as as a parent versus a a school committee member, which takes a lot of work because I know in many districts, that happens all of the time. And um, so thank you for that. And I think it's a, that's a model that I hope everyone can can continue to follow. And our board does that. I'm not saying it doesn't. It's just, I want that to be known that you've done that as well.
Aaron, would you like to make the last motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Need a roll call, I think.
Paul?
Hi.
Tina?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Me, I, Aaron, we'll be in touch. We're gonna get together and celebrate you. And Aaron?
I, my final I.
Thank you. Good night, everybody.